...workshop to order. Uh. Rest in peace, Lord. In prayer.
With.
And back to the team.
Before we pray, let's keep in prayers this week for James. He's one of our janitorial persons, works at Vegas here. He's not doing well. And also Ronald McGee's wife. Some of them know Ronald. He's wife has played today. Let's have just a moment of silence. He's a close friend of mine. And I thank some of them who know him, who worked, fought and killed his most of his life. We can take this a second. That's great. Heavenly Father, thank you for this great day of blessings on our lives for watching over us from those today. Heavenly Father, bless each and every one that's here to see. Give us a knowledge and understanding of Jesus to make the best decisions for our account. Heavenly Father, bless our children. Heavenly Father, teach guidance, direct. Always keep ahead of you, Father, Lord, protect you. Bless our soldiers and first responders to save their every father. Heavenly Father, I pray for this nation, and it will come stronger and turn our face toward Jesus. Thank you for all that you do in our lives. Most of all, for plant salvation. Amen.
Amen.
Blessed are the nations to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Father, for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Maybe you say it. Call call please.
David Atkins.
Here.
Charles Baird.
Here.
Dwayne Baird. Johnny Bruce.
Here.
Michael Douglas.
Here.
Dwayne Gibson. Beverly Hall.
Here.
Tyler King. Dwayne Kids. Scotty Kids.
Here.
Dr. Marlowe.
Here.
Sue Nance. Rusty Orick.
Here.
Derek Sharp.
Here.
Scott Standfield.
Here.
Ten present, five absent.
I'd say that we do have a quorum. Uh, tonight, we're going to be recognizing some people. And at this time, Mayor, you have the floor.
And our youth volunteer group in Tennessee. Land of Ford. Became a youth volunteer in high school by volunteering with East Tennessee Children's Hospital. Also working with all types of Tennessee. Uh, specializing in fundraising and outcomes to be recognized as top fundraiser in high schools. And whereas Landon Ford while attending East Tennessee Volunteer Children's Hospital, Neil Naal, ICU, the volunteer, the advocacy of bridges, the butterfly dash, burger dash, another block overseeing fundraising for all things for Children's Hospital with 250 adult volunteers and 70 high school students. And whereas Landon volunteered locally as part of the terrible cares playground, having organized an all-inclusive playground and having been organizing there all. And now Mayor Ford, the mayor of the Commission of Campbell County, Tennessee, hereby recognize that youth is the future in the volunteer state and just from what Landon Ford, youth volunteer here. I just want to say thank you so much and thank you to my parents. Land, hang on just a second. Let me say one thing. Appreciate watching all of you. You did a great job. Missy, you and Jeff, you've been a bond. You got to give your respects, everybody. I appreciate you. You're good parents. You got to thank you. Patty? Congratulations. Keep up the good work that you were offering to y'all. Thank you so much. You come from good people, buddy. Thank you very much.
Derek? Mary?
I just want to say I've known him for quite several years now, and he's always been a good guy. I've known his dad and his mom too, and we're just so thankful that your dad's with us tonight.
Just congratulations and thanks for all of you. I just want to thank you for the honor of getting a break. I really thank you. I've known Jeff for a long time, but he's been good. Scott?
Same here. Great family. I mean, I'm proud to know them. Like I said, Jeff, from the position stands at the little league ball games and everything, Landon and Missy, I mean, you can't ask for no finer people. He's done a wonderful job and something to be proud of. Thank you.
Congratulations. Anything else?
I'm just glad to be part of this. Jeff, every time I see him, it's a blessing. He's still above ground and still being able to do what he needs to do. He's a, to me, he's a mentor. Don't give up.
No. Thank you.
I would just like to say congratulations. This right here means a lot to this body. I mean, I know we get criticized down there, but hey, uh, to recognize you two for the job that you do, it's just, it's just fantastic. Like Rusty said, it makes this job a whole lot nicer than it is.
The chairman, I'll say one more thing. We'll always be cool as cats. We went to grandma's school together.
All right, folks, if you'd like to stay and listen to these guys carry on a couple hours, you're welcome. If you're with it, you can leave. Thank you. Appreciate you all.
Thank you, guys.
His daddy's about to die soon. It was a miracle. Another miracle.
The guy with the, uh, about the beds for the children?
Yeah.
When's your, when's your next build? Are you, I know it's not going to be this winter, I'm sure.
Probably sometime in March. Once the weather breaks.
You don't mind getting to us with our commissioner secretary and let us know.
You may have a few volunteers. Just don't bring Scotty, he'll cut his fingers off.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, guys, let's build some agenda. What do you think?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have the approval for previous mini-meetings. Um, no Republican applications approval. Committee reports in minutes that consist of budget and finance, legislative affairs, building and grounds, airport, and sanitation. Also approval of budget amendments and other funding resolutions. Approval for payment for the month of travel credit card use. Mayor, you got yours yet?
Yes, but usually I haven't been spent.
Got, got. Yeah, I'm fit.
Our balance is reflective of our registration fees for the last conference.
The last conference. Okay, reports from county officials and other departments, including Board of Education. Uh, reports from organizations receiving funding from the county.
Um, Patricia will get hers in tomorrow. Her, Ms. Um.
Mayor's.
Yes, she, they had the wife star hurt in hospital today, so she's.
Oh, bless her heart. Now, that's, that's fine. You get it, just you have to. Okay, um. Moving on down. Information. Okay, other matters. The, uh, BOE, copy rental agreement for Jellicoe High School, Jellicoe Elementary and Campbell County High School. Also the home grant policies and procedures. Those are in the package. Correct?
Have to be approved.
Those are not in the packet, those are separate. Yeah. It's not in that. You did not receive the, I put in that out three days to go along together, and I'll be able to get more on this later.
Is that what she's talking about?
I think that could be a decision that you guys could make.
Rusty, we're able to take care of everything. So if anybody wants to carry it this weekend, we can take care of it next month. Does anybody wish to carry the home grant policies and procedures?
I'll do it, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I ask is just make sure everything's looked through.
Joe, did you have a chance to look at this yet?
I have not.
Okay. Scott, if you don't mind, get, get with Joe to make sure everything's.
Yes, ma'am. I've got the question.
Okay.
Boy, this is probably, have I sent a million on this?
They have, but I've postponed it because they either on their papers, because all their papers aren't here. I see what's supposed to be done with it. Sixteen. I've taken it to her.
Will it be ready? Will it be ready to be approved for?
No, you're, you're just going to approve the policies and procedures.
That'll be fine.
That's the only thing we like.
And it'll be your responsibility to get.
I sure will.
Okay? All right. Mayor, you have the floor.
I have the floor. Okay, I'm going to do a couple of things. Is there anything you want to do something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Listen, uh, I want Randy to come up, Randy, man. I want to say something, and I want him to take on something. We talked a lot about the industrial things that's going on, and, uh, the other day, we talked about, uh, the plan of the frozen foods plant. And they're already hiring folks, and they, I mean, they're already filled the line. And I, you know, and I think, of course, everybody, I thought you always leave somebody out, and I did. But we, you know, we, we thank the industrial, the commission for all your help. You guys pushed this through for us. And then, of course, Bobby Stucksbury down in Carroll worked on this before we did, actually. And he's, he put in a lot of work on this too. So, uh, I want to thank Bobby for his help. And I want Randy to tell you all something, but they're going to have something down there that we need to kind of promote, a job thing, and he's got, he got a couple. Go ahead, Randy.
November twenty ninth. I'm staying with college. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Job, probably about ten quarters in Gold Creek, and, uh, they are as well, so I encourage y'all to give out.
Houston. There might be some that, though, pretty, they like. Boy, this is another part of the thank you.
Well, there's two or three things to celebrate. They're going to be a job, a retirement job, so they pay four on Tuesday, one night. And they'll also be from state, two, three seats, there'll be a map, a stamp, and all that. But you know, basically, the city's got, just that, so hopefully, I'll, I'll do that. Hopefully, they'll basically, they'll stay there for, others, hopefully, will buy that all. This will be the same, largest employer in fact, and I can say something, so anyway, we'll say about two weeks, well, three, about two months, about two months, uh, two hundred and sixty, uh, about forty others, uh, I thank this, Simon, uh, so that I can, uh, thousand employees, so pretty, here, at a hundred and forty.
Very, very important. I'd say you guys are part of that. Like I said, we'll make sure, we thank you for pushing that through, and you got that, we lost here one night, and we got pushed through, especially pilot program, which you guys had, you know, that helped them bring them money for training, and it's, it's big. Average, average sound is, look, forty-four thousand.
Wow.
That's fantastic. You thanked us, and I want to thank you all. And Mr. Stuckberry, yeah, and Jerry, I know he, I talked to him early on, he worked on it. We can't give up no more, we've got a lot. We got to stay, we got to stay in the green.
You said something, you said, or, a little bit, stated, the guy, the girl, the one they sacked is called, and he said, we've never been through this way. And he said, I think Tennessee.
That's right. Appreciate everybody working, but I've been in with other sides when I've lost my job and COVID, and it's not there. It never been. But I appreciate it, watching you, and that creation, and I know you thanked us, and I want to thank you all. And the joint McDonald's, and I know different ones who worked on that, because I can be, I think that's one of them all night, and that's conflict, is what I've got to do. But I appreciate it, and I'm glad, and I thank God, he's, he's, we help me lose them all. And I, and I thank this commission, the mayor, and the joint McDonald's, and I thank the all the same though. But some back, I know it's hard, the world we live in, it's hard to get people coming forward, and it, it chokes me out, and somebody to be with God. I've been blessed to be able to work in Campbell County, that is part of my life. Some part of me, in fact, is gold mine. And I hope my good time, we can do something for those of you that have a holy gentleman asking, yes, he's forgotten about the hell I am, but I appreciate you, my boy.
Scott, you have?
I was going to elaborate just a little bit, which, which, again, I want to say to you, Mayor, uh, Lane Kinsley, I'm serious, though, I don't endorse anybody, that's what I'm not doing here tonight. I know Grant Brown's probably thirty-five years, so he's probably forty-five years. This is what the county needs, things like this, to help the, the, the county, you want to thank the commission, but we also want to thank you all. And all I can tell you, the commission, is keep doing the good job, because it's speaking for itself, people all over, I'm out everywhere in the county, and people are talking about the good team and the everything that your office and the county is doing. And I personally will thank you, I appreciate you all, all the work you do, keep up the good work.
Before we move on, again, hey, that's, we asked the gentleman, Spokali Carroll, and then not only Bobby, but the city council, maybe, did you?
I think I need to let you know about what we've been there. My innocence, I'm a little bit shy. We wish to give confirmation to that. Um, we want to know that this is.
Oh, I thought it, it, it wasn't what I said. It is to confirmation, and I'm Scott Standfield, and I'm.
Um, I was going to say that. You know, home grant with the foundation of the vision, he was going to do it, but the late, uh, anyway, we got one bridge, we got that, so we steal, we made. So, uh, I, 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 uh, we, 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 uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, that's good, babe, but we stick to that, so we, we, uh, 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 we,
okay. Clothes, uh, those resources that they laid, I think, exactly, we'll just wait to get you out. Okay. Medical board. Oh, I thought it was a bird. Didn't hear me anything?
I got nothing, just like.
Don't you need anything? Dwayne Baird's not here?
We just got a building and grounds meeting tomorrow night, don't we? Six, am I right? Building and grounds too?
Insurance and personnel and buildings and grounds.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to try to, when it gets to me, I'll have to explain it.
Dwayne Kids, what was that? He's at a funeral tonight. David Madlock. Also, I was going to tell you, if you all don't mind, remember that family in your prayers too. I was going to tell you, but kind of got a little hectic, I'm sorry.
Uh, Scott?
Okay. I have, let's see, seven things here. Just kidding, guys. We'll do this quickly. Uh, two of these will focus on the mayor. I think you were going to, I heard you and Johnny were speaking about, I heard you were going to elaborate a little bit on the amlets. Could you talk a little bit about that for us? You had said something earlier about, you know, helping the EMS, if you don't mind.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Well, we, we hope to have something next month, for, uh, we're already at this point.
Okay, we can move on from that, and we'll do, we'll do it respectfully next month then. Uh, and I think you and I had spoke a little bit about, I think this commission would be happy to hear a little bit about, you said, mentioned the Davis Chapel community, you had been talking to people. Can you elaborate on that for me, please?
Well, I've been asked about the, the center at Davis Chapel, and so I did a little research on it, it's owned by the school, and talked to Jennifer, and she's, she's willing to let it be used for something, but it would have to be done correctly. She's not going to hurt over five people when they play ball or something. But if there is a, somebody there in that community that would like to form a, probably a five, you know, form a nonprofit and that, that.
I was vice president of the community center for several years, and it takes a lot of money to keep that building going.
Yes, it does.
And most of it just by volunteers and people donating money, and it's hard to get money right now, so it takes a lot of money.
I mean, that's something.
We had a good group.
Second district, probably.
We had a good group, but most of them's gone now. The, the people that gave the money are, they're, they're gone and just.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Um, okay, thank you for that, but you'll keep us updated on that if anybody, you got a suspect for that. Something I've been thinking about here lately a lot, and it's been brought to my attention quite a bit, is sad to say, and I know it's in other counties too, but we have a huge, huge homeless problem, problem here with homeless people. Now, folks, I don't know how you all feel about that, but it actually, in a sense, breaks my heart a lot when you go into these communities, not just in the second district, I'm talking about really everywhere, and you've got these, you know, taxpayers that's got beautiful homes that pays taxes, and right over here across the hill, or here, right out, they're coming in their yards, they're, you know, living behind their houses. And this is all over the county, but I know we got a lot of these problems that are really bad up, you know, in Lefolli, period. They're everywhere. And but when you get people saying that they're, you know, living behind your house, or, you know, in an old, uh, building, or anything like that, you know, people are really concerned about that. So my way of thinking is simple, I think, Mayor, that.
So my way of thinking is simple, I think, Mayor, that we, before you got elected, I think you and I had talked about this issue. I remember very clearly that I would, myself, I'm throwing the ideal at, at you and I need your all's help because I can't do anything by myself at all. But, you know, I was, I was thinking the other day, I was thinking to myself, if we could possibility maybe, I just want to know what your all's input about it, if you think what's saying to me, Scotty, it's crazy, but no, it's an ideal, like everybody comes before the forefront with these ideals, you know? So my way of thinking, Mayor, if, and, you know, and I, I know the new administration that's coming up for the city of Lefollic will, will help, the new mayor, and I think if you guys will work closely, if you can reach out to him and other mayors in the cities, not just Lefollic. I'm thinking myself, and Randy Brown's really good at this, again, my way of thinking is you could put, if you could get some of them together, I mean, there's, there's a lot of them, it takes work and takes dedication. If you, if you put the effort, you can do anything. And I, I, I think that I proved that to myself. My way of thinking is simple, Mayor, and I hope you'll like this ideal. Maybe we can, you know, you all can get together and I know, I know the, the new mayor of the city of Lefollic is definitely interested in this, is maybe put, get, get these people together and evaluate them and see who they are, where they're from. I now know a lot of these people are coming in from, from other cities, people, you know, they're, they're busting them up here. I'm, I'm, I've been told that several times. So that, you either, you either want to, and, and Zach or you can laugh if you want to, but you can either, you can either get them together and put them to work, get them a job, or you bust them back somewhere else, you know, because it's an issue here. It's a really serious issue and it ain't getting, it ain't getting any easier, guys. It's just, there's more of them coming in, more of them. And a lot of that, it's sad to say, a lot of that has got a lot, a lot to do with, with drugs and how they live their lifestyle. But it's, it's, it's getting worse, guys, and we have, now's the time. We've got good administration from the county, we've got good city mayors, so now's the time that we all need to jump on board and, and move forward with this. So I want to stop talking, Mayor, I want to hear what you have to say about it, and I appreciate everybody's time on this issue, because it's an issue that I'm, I'm, I'm not going to let go. I want to, I want to work on this. We need to move forward. It's, it's, you know, it's creating a lot of problems and we've got them in Jellico, we've got them everywhere, and it's bad. And it makes, what it makes it, guys, look like is when people come in here and, and want to relocate and, and have a business and stuff like that. I know firsthand for a fact that these people are causing a lot of problems, not just in, you know, the cities, you know, especially in Lefollic, one instance where a, you know, a homeless person went and scratched this business's car up. I mean, he, they really had an issue with it. I mean, the, the, so we got some issues here, you know very well, you, you did a great job with the people in jail, I'll never forget what you did for, for the, the people in jail, and I really commend you for that, I hadn't forgot about that. But anyway, I'd like to know what you have to say about, a lot of them's got, you know, their own drugs and stuff like that, but something has got to go, guys. We can get a grip on this and I, I know we, we got to do something, and I'd listen, I'd know how you feel about it.
About homeless in jail?
Yes, all of the, in what you, okay. What you think you might could do to?
Well, I think, you know, you can, you can do lots of things and say we've done good. Truth is, all these homeless folks that you find, they're not homeless because of one thing. Most of them have at least two problems. They have a dual diagnosis, shall we call it. And there's more than one thing that they could be diagnosed with that is part of the reason they're homeless. You put them in, you take them to a house small and you won't fix them. We have to fix the root cause of homelessness or we're just spending our weeks. And the root cause is, you're correct, put them together or we're, find out what's wrong, you know? And that's where I think we need to work together with and push the idea of all our services such as Health Department, CHET, anywhere they might go for help, if they're sitting or wherever. And they need to be trained to say, you know, what does this person need? Are they, are they on some kind of drug that helps them psychotropic? I mean, I don't know. Something they need, then let's get them to the right source to fix that problem. Or does this person have a, an addiction problem, we need to send them to this place? But how many of them go, that's the problem. They have to warn it. And, and, you know, selling that idea, I think, is worth saying, but that's just my thing. Now, I don't think that you can't build something and say this takes care of that network. It just makes it bigger. You've got to fix the underlying problems. And I think a good idea is let our people work together and say, well, you know, let's try to give them the services they need. If they need help with addiction, let's get it for them. If they need counseling, their mental health counseling or whatever, let's get it for them. And if you don't fix that, I don't think you fix anything. That's just.
Anything else, Scotty?
Well, I do know that, I take it very seriously when you go meet with someone at the door and they have a lengthy long conversation about homeless people living right beside them or they scared, they're scared for their life or, you know, they could break in on them. I mean, this is a serious issue.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
You know, you're talking about these areas and stuff, and I don't know what it is in the county, but it seems like, just listening to what you have to say, it's in the cities. And that is up to the cities.
It's outside of the city, the county's too, Johnny.
I understand, but say, I don't know, Scotty, I'm just saying, what you were talking about, it seems like you were talking about the cities. And.
It's all over the county.
I'm sure that the mayor, those mayors, which that to you, you have no problem.
Well, we work, we're working, you know, that's what I'm saying.
Well, one thing that I had thought about here is if you, some of them, you know, if you get five or 10 of them or 20 of them, that's halfway decent and they're capable of working, that's, that's, that's a help to, to the county and our communities, and that, that helps us too. So, you know, it, there's, go ahead.
I think Beverly got a question.
Well, I was going to say, now, when my brother Mike was mayor, he opened, was the Lefollic school when the temperatures dropped below zero.
Yep.
And you wouldn't believe the response they got to keep them warm.
Exactly.
And they provided food and counseling too, you know, talking to them and, and they came, but you can't keep them there. You know, just, you know, it's just like you said, it's up to them whether they want to do, we can't make them. We can lead them to the water, but we can't make them drink.
Yes, ma'am. Scotty, anything else?
No, I just know that Ted Ott said the project at Highway 63 is going real smooth and I'm keeping that updated, everything's going real good as, as, as expected.
Yeah.
Thank you, everything's good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Zach, you have a call?
I've got a bench.
Just saying, now, Scotty, you're carrying the policies and procedures, correct?
Before I go, I'm going to say. And so with that, I felt like seven items from this agenda, all seven items. Okay, the first item I have is the 2023 legislative agenda. Do you want me to go over that real quick? Just, I'll just say that we formed the Legislative Affairs Committee, it's been probably two years ago. The goal is, is to maximize revenue and minimize unfunded mandates. So this is just our position statements for 2023 and we will likely amend that as the legislative session continues, starting in January. We also have four resolutions that came from the Legislative Affairs Committee. Resolution one is a resolution requesting additional prisoner board revenue from the state Tennessee. This is very similar to the resolution that we passed back in March or April. We also have a resolution requesting funds from the state Tennessee to aid in operating the Veteran Affairs Office. And that's currently, I think we pay out approximately $10,000 a year in training expenditures. We also have a resolution requesting the Tennessee Department of Revenue to collect all hotel motel paxes. This is similar to the resolution that the commission passed, I believe in October of 2020. And then we also have a resolution requesting extension of Ground Ambulance Service Provider Assessment Act. And that was, I believe, established in 2017. I'm not sure how much is generated with that because there's been some changes in state law, but it generates a decent amount of money that we don't otherwise have to use local revenue for, and that comes up every year. And then, in the Infrastructure Committee, we voted to close the list of projects under consideration for ARPA funds as recommended, in the national rate, as recommended by the Infrastructure Committee. That's just pretty much saying we're not going to entertain any additional requests, which we can't do that because we've already spent all the money. And then the other one is just the allocation of funds for round two of ARPA. That is all the ARPA funds we have. I've listened to ARPA for two years, I don't want to hear the word ARPA, baby. Yes. And I believe that's everything I've got.
I thought he was going to get a tattoo with that word.
Sir, as some of yous are already aware, we're going to have a Buildings and Grounds meeting tomorrow night. We had a, a big list that Tony had brought before us, and I'll, I'll try to make it brief. Restill and strip, both parking lots, and Beverly you'd asked, you asked about the one at the back building. The one at the back building is concrete, so it just needs to be cleaned. We can't seal it with black, it'll just come right back up.
What about the striping?
Yeah, and we do the striping, and I think we can do that, and we'll discuss it tomorrow night more about getting the prisoners help to do some extra cleaning up around the facility. Me and Dwayne Gibson had made a trip up there and looked, and we've got other things to go over, onens at the jail, at the Justice Center, it might be something we have to do later, we have to look at the fund. The mayor and David and Randy and I, it was a short notice, we went out to PTF and looked at the roof. I'm not a roofer. I'm, I, if it's leaking, it's leaking. But David looked at it, the mayors looked at it, and Randy, and we talked to the people. I don't think the whole roof needs replacing. I think Jeff and I had discussed at the meeting that we had out there, is doing RFP, Request for Proposal, bring some people in and see what their thoughts is on it, and then we'll set it out for bid. I think just a portion of that roof will have to be replaced. There's some work that I directed Tony to go out there and do the gutter drains, some cleaning up behind the building, getting the water away from the building that's running in. The other things we'll discuss tomorrow night, there are some things that we, we probably ain't going to be able to do, but there was going to be some add to it tomorrow night, and we just approved the Hethner Fund or ARPA funding for the jail, for the cameras and the locks. Jeff had called me today and said that the sheriff has a proposal, he's going to be here tomorrow night too, since it's dealing with ARPA funding, he wanted it come before Buildings and Grounds. Jeff did, so it'd be allocated. So the membership needs to be there tomorrow night because we'll probably end up having something for that agenda. So I'll probably have a motion to bring forward about the cameras or solicitation of RFP. And the EMS sealing, I think we've looked at it, we've come to a solution. If you seen tonight in the budget amendment, he's had a little extra money to throw at it, and I'll probably have that on the agenda actually approved, and it'll have to come out of commission, and maybe, hopefully we'll get the bids in and get it done quickly. But one thing we've got to address, and the mayor knows it and David knows it, is that leak out there over that electrical panel at PTF. Regardless, that's got to be addressed ASAP. So that, doing that tomorrow night, and we're going to have an Insurance Personnel Committee meeting. Are there going to be anything come out of that, Zach? I use one spearheading that through about the 401K. But I need the membership, if you can't attend, call one of your fellow commissioners. And Scotty, if you can't be there, call Beverly. Well, you never have, never know. I mean, we think a lot like you said, so.
No, no.
But as far as I know, that's, that's two things that I know definitely, probably coming out, say EMS and that jail, we've got to get the wheels rolling because you may not realize, TCI can jerk us around, if because of this, we could lose our certifications. So we got to start acting on some of this stuff. So it'll come out of committee and it'll end up in the FMS hands for and so with, hopefully. If you have anything, commissioners, as the new chairman of the Buildings and Grounds, if you see anything going on around your area, the buildings, bring them to us. Call me up, give me a holler, we'll look at it. You know, I was all for sealing it, but they said we can't seal black or concrete, it's just going to come.
I could have swore that, I could have swore we had it black top.
You've got a section of black top that goes over the drive-through, that's the only section of black top, rest of it's concrete, which is great. It'll outlast the black top 10 to 1. It just needs some addressing, some pressure washing.
Boesher just come up and stripped it years ago.
And we're going to get that, hopefully get it striped and get everything. We need to make sure we maintenance our building. I know Tony's got a big job, but, and, and, but sometimes we need to look around and see things. The back building, the fence around the back building, that needs, we can take prisoners and go up there, through the sheriff's department, they did this once before out here, Johnny. They cleaned it slowly, it took all summer, and got that whole thing cleaned and repaint, it looks great. But there's other buildings that's in the county that we can actually do, but anything you have, don't hesitate, bring it to one of the committee members and we'll, we'll kind of spearhead it through.
Is there a question?
Yes, sir.
When they will take the wraps off and close that?
Well, I talked to him last week and he, and I hadn't, actually I looked Saturday or Sunday morning coming back in, and I didn't see him on it. There was three traffic cones sitting there, and I'll try to make a trip before we leave tonight. He said the, the wraps was gone, and he was taking the cones down. That was put in place to keep people to come in the front entrance. Now, I didn't know this, but Tony had told me that the judges had met and maybe the DA about security, and I, I'm a busy person, but we'll find somebody that can attend those meetings on behalf of the county commission because we're in charge of this property totality. And if those doors are going to be locked, we need to be aware of it.
So it was the judges that decided to lock the door out here?
Yes. But, you know, and, and I agree with them, I do agree to a certain point that they need to be the centralized area that comes in. When people parks out here, that's why they're going to go in. If people parks at the, at the mayor's office, they can go anywhere once they get there.
They have business here in this courthouse too. They'll get over there.
Well, I think they, I think even the department head, Dennis wants them to come through this way too. I think there was a little episode about a handgun that was left in the bathroom over here in the men's bathroom, which I don't, you know, you prosecute people when they do stuff like that.
So the metal detectors are not working anymore?
They're not manning them, they have not the manpower to man this section. So they're manning this section, that's why they asked for a onen to be put over this entrance because they're backing it up outside, and, you know, if you back them up so far, they're going to be past the onen anyway, so you're just going to keep going further and deeper. I think the county commission actually has, has been issued a key. If you, if you don't have a key in this side door, get with Amanda, she'll get you a key because we, we're employees. We need badges. I think the courthouse did this a couple of years ago. And I don't know, but I think it was actually worked through the mayor's office in the previous time. So the commission needs a badge. I mean, I've been stopped and, and they're doing their job. But, you know, if you come down here to pick up something and, and to do the county business, you know, you need to, people don't know the word commissioner, they know Scotty is, you know, but they don't know me.
I know they do.
But anyway, anything, anytime you've got a committee meeting, just please, if you can't attend, just pick up the phone, text your fellow commissioners, if I can't be here, I'm going to text Scotty, because we got to have enough to have these meetings to go through. It's, it's hard, it's hard when you're trying to deal with it just as a three member and you've got to, you've got to push things through, and it can be one person, not see eye to eye, and it won't even come out of committee. So, but that's the biggest things, but if you see anything, there's going to be some light issues after the just, this part, this addition's finished down here, we're going to have to address, that wasn't put into plan and it was done intentionally, because we can do it cheaper in-house than we can do it out of house. Now, do you want to have a grand opening at that facility? I need to know that from you all. Normally we have a ribbon cutting when the commission does something, that's taxpayers' money, and that was actually the biggest part of it was paid through COVID relief, part of it was, and jail bill, board bills, which was a blessing. But if you want to have that, you know, we need to try to arrange it because it's coming quick.
Are you going to speak to them?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. If some of yous may be aware, and I've requested Amanda to ask last week what the intentions was, I think he actually sent some paperwork that he'd filled out with the state. According to the regional director out of Knoxville, Mr. Forte, he, as of December 31st, his certification's being gone. I would like, and I think you've requested a formal letter from Kevin, I don't want to run Kevin off, and I'm sure yous don't either. But Johnny's asked me, as the chairman of the Insurance and Personnel, that's the way we did some, our hiring with Amanda, I think we did a pretty decent job, didn't we, Amanda? But anyway, that, and that's not going to be in stone, but it'll come out through a committee and it'll be looked at, and now that's left in our hands to replace that person. And I talked with Anderson, going to be discussing it some, I've got some paperwork that was sent down, the job description, I've looked for a job description for our Veterans Affairs Officer, can't find it. Like everything else, it gets misplaced or somebody took it home with them or something. We'll probably adopt a new one, Anderson County's got a great one, and we might have to tweak it some. That person that's replacing Kevin's going to have some big issues to fill, and we're going to, we're going to be changing some things. There's going to be some things changed around because our veterans deserves our most respect. Anderson County, I love it every month, and we've been invited, and yous are invited, the next thing comes up, every month they have a breakfast. And I don't know if we can do it every month, but hopefully we can do it four times a year for our veterans. That's, and we have quite a few of them, and we want to keep on board. I hope in time, ever hit, hit on the coal, the coal miners. I've had a few of them that stretch out to me because they know I'm a coal miner, ex-coal miner. I'll never get black lung, mate. I didn't work enough time in the mines. But we have a lot of veterans.
I did, I filled up them holes in the, in the dynamite, I did.
Okay.
Hey, I fixed it. Come on.
Uh.
I did.
If you know any coal miners around, and that, a lot of them, when you get talking to them, they need, they're trying to get their black lung, and they deserve it. And I've actually picked up the phone and I've called two of our senators, and I've talked to them, and they've got the ball rolling, trying to work with them. I mean, I'm talking to people that's 30-year plus in the coal business, and I'm telling you, Mike knows the same thing I know, Boomer's sitting back there, he knows the same thing. If they worked in the coal mines for 15 years, they got black lung, and they deserve having that, and some of them's living in poverty. So look around, I mean, Mr. Sharp, you, you live in a part of the community that's still got a lot of coal miners that's still surviving, you, you think it don't go a long ways, it does. When you pick up the phone, you call Tim Burchett, he knows where Campbell County's at, and he'll figure out who you are, he'll, he'll, he'll actually Google you and find out that you're a commissioner, and it goes a long ways. And Mr. Fleishman's office, Ms. Boesher's, one of the best people, he's, he's got a, a saying working under him. But we need to try to help these people. I've got a little bit of time, I know we spend our time on a lot of things, but a lot of these people deserves, and they don't know, they really don't know that the county commission can help somewhat to start turning that wheel and getting it squeaking, and they can bring them back in and look at them, because it's happening all over the country, but it's a dying art here in Campbell County, and in soon time, they're going to be gone. So hopefully, we can reach out with something. I, I've rattled on, I know David is, David's ready to go, I could look at his face, but be there tomorrow night, and if you can help me, David, if you can, if you can help me in these endeavors with some of this roofing, I'd appreciate it.
I'll be there.
Anything else, Russ?
No, just, we'll have everything ready for this job description change, okay?
Okay. Scotty?
Only thing I got, Johnny, I want to be carrying a proclamation from your classroom, land in the board for the mayor. That's all I got.
I don't know if this is going to be specific, but the Children's Center did ask me to remind everyone about their open house tomorrow from 5:00 a.m. Stop in, make an appearance, grab something.
Can they bring something down here to us?
At the Children's Center.
Children's Center.
At the Children's Center, at my run stage, if you don't know, if you're going to the school, it's up there.
There's one committee that, that has actually started about a year or two ago. I think Zach chairs it. Not anymore. Help me out with nonprofits, we need to start looking at that, because after the budget amendments, everything adds up, and we're going to have to start looking at that dearly, honestly. I mean, everybody wants to, Scotty, you know, Scotty's mentioned about the homeless, and, and I know there's a problem there, and I agree with you, Mayor, that there's, people choose as some of their actions, I know some that lived under the bridge up there, Scotty, they draw more than I did. They choose sometimes, but, but overall, you know, that nonprofit things, you know, they keep adding, adding up, and we can't help no more. But who chairs that? Or did we do away with it?
No, we still have it.
Okay.